Welcome to the meeting of North Penn School District's Board of School Directors, June 10, 2014. Tonight is our regularly scheduled work session. The meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they're being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of the Pennsylvania Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens to speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the audience's logbooks. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker, and this is in reference to Board Policy 8340. Good evening. We will start off our meeting with our guys. Your guys are up, the color guard.
Color guard. Left. Free state goes.
Give it a flag.
All right, states of America, in due republi-- for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order goes. Ready. Ready. They're joining the others.
As we do, from time to time, we do get a chance to honor some of our students and some of the accomplishments of North Penn students, and tonight we're going to continue with that. So, Dr. Dietrich, why don't you take that?
Thank you, Mr. President. We are pleased this evening to recognize two groups. The first group we'd like to recognize are the members of the North Penn High School Air Force Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps. And with us this evening, we have Major Mark Miller.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here to introduce our junior ROTC officers. We've had a very eventful year. These are our cadet leaders, the top four, if you will. This year, they stepped up to become the high school's officers, and they led a group of 126 cadets to an inspection that was done by Headquarters Air Force. They sent an officer up here to inspect them, and they received the highest rating possible. And that rating is and exceeds standards. Less than 25 percent of the units will get that rating throughout the Air Force Junior ROTC system. They also rebuilt the drill team, and they coordinated their first overnight drill competition. And in doing that, they got six trophies, seven if you count the one ribbon that they got for first place, which matches the number that they've had to date. The cadet leadership was instrumental in our color guard, going down to Nationals in Florida and competing for the first time ever. And they also focused their attention on school and community service outreach, and in doing that, they did more than 2,800 hours of community service. And that led to them receiving the Distinguished Unit Award with Merit, which less than 10 percent of the units get that award as well. And again, that was for the first time in the history of the Corps. All right, so at this point, I'd like to introduce the members. First, we have Alexandra Arnold. She is our current deputy commander.
Congratulations. Well done for your unit. Well done.
Thanks, sir. We have Kyle Carvin. He's our outgoing group commander.
Kyle, congratulations for your unit and everything you've done.
Thanks, sir.
Kyle, congratulations, too.
Thanks, sir.
Patrick Stendel. He is our outgoing deputy commander.
Patrick. Congratulations for your unit.
And we have Kevin Varga, who took over the unit and is now our new group commander.
Mr. Varga, I'll see you again in the future, for sure.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well done. Congratulations. Guys, this is an opportunity for the full board to congratulate each and every one of you, so I'd like you to come through. And Major, would you please join them at the end? Would you join them, too?
Yes.
You know where you're going?
Thank you.
You know where you're going?
Thank you.
Where are you going?
No, I'm actually going to listen to your report.
Congratulations, sir. Well done. Hello? Good to see you not getting acknowledged in a back room. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
This is for you, as I acknowledge you, and I also got offered Denise, too.
Cool. Thank you, sir.
Okay?
It's good to see you.
Great job, guys. Another round of applause for these guys. Boy, and for those history buffs that remember the difficulty it was to come to a conclusion to choose one of these groups and the success they've had since then, it's amazing.
Thank you. We also are pleased to recognize this evening members of the North Penn High School Student Government Association. And with us this evening, we have Kyle Berger, the advisor.
Thank you, Dr. Dietrich. We are here tonight to honor the work of North Penn High School Student Government Association. And over the past three years, this organization, which is comprised of our five elected officers, whom we'll meet tonight, about a dozen cabinet members, 30 elected senators, 10 from each grade level, and over 100 classroom representatives from each social studies class at the high school. They've really done a phenomenal job providing the student body with activities to take part in, and even more so importantly, doing community service projects. And these students have planned and put on annual homecoming events, electing homecoming king and queen, having a pregame tailgate party. We've done powder puff football, Red Cross blood drives. And in fact, over the past three years, as far as community service is concerned, our organization has raised over $10,000 for charity, and we're very proud of that. One of the organizations that recently benefited from a charitable activity was the United Way locally. Their Stuff the Bus Foundation, which provides school supplies for students who are in need and can't afford to buy school supplies, backpacks, pens, pencils, et cetera. That's a cause that's very near and dear to our hearts. And they recently received a $1,000 donation from our organization after a charity dance that we held back in May. For these efforts, among other things, the National Association of Student Councils has named our organization a National Gold Council of Excellence in each of the last three years. I'm proud to say that North Penn High School Student Government Association is one of just 10 such student governments in the entire state of Pennsylvania to have received that award. So, we are very proud of that, and even more so proud that we've done it three years in a row. So, at this point, I'll introduce the five officers who are here with us this evening. First is our recording secretary, Melissa Cubitt. Go ahead. Melissa's going to be attending Syracuse University in the fall. Next up is our corresponding secretary, Bryn Halfpenny. She will be attending New York University in the fall.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well done for yourself.
Thank you.
Next is our vice president, Colleen McGovern. She'll be attending Lafayette College in the fall.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next is our treasurer, Adrian Newcomer. She'll be attending the University of Pittsburgh in the fall. And finally, our president, Patrick Zankoli, who will be attending the University of Pennsylvania this fall.
Guys, we're going to get an opportunity for the full board administration to congratulate each and every one of you, so please come forward. And Kyle, would you join them at the end for us?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you very much. I love you. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you very much. I love you. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you very much. I love you. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you very much. I love you. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. I love you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. I love you. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. I love you. Thank you. Thank you very much. I love you. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you. 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 Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. 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 Okay. So, we're going to erect, well, as part of our revitalization program, which was started many years ago, and we've done several programs in the past, we're going to replace what we call the lower snack bar, which is snack bar that services softball and the Little Leagues. So, what I have here is a sketch of the building.
I'll get to that. I'll get to the handout.
I already know it. No, no. No.
We have sketches of the building, but what it looks like, some drawings.
Sketches of the buildings and drawings, and what Davis handed out is a plot, so you can see where it's going to be placed. And if you look at the plot, it's right about in the center. There should be something that says "existing snack bar" and "new snack bar." So, we've started this program for the snack bar about a year or so ago, and we have the drawings. They've been through one pass of the permits committee, and we're making some updates to the drawings. And we have funding, some of the funding in place, and we're looking to get started with your approval this year by laying some of the foundation work.
Can, for orientation purposes, if you turn it upside down, it's a little easier to follow where it is because of us.
Dave, do you have an extra one?
But let me ask you a couple of basic, real basic questions before I open it up to the field. How big is that going to be, size-wise?
It's 20 by 40, including the patio.
Big's the one we have at the high school.
I'll share, I'll be honest with you.
I mean, it's a ticket window and a kitchen, but...
Yeah, I think you're right.
Okay, proportion of that helps.
Do you want to make yourself a 20 by 24?
We could make it bigger.
You are. Well, no, no. Here's why I'm bringing this up. You are aware that we're in discussions with Upper Gwinnett to solve some drainage issues in the region, right? I mean, they've come to us about building and making sure that we have good flood protection and a few other things.
That's correct.
Are they going to subject you to the same kind of thing that... Because it floods badly in the wintertime. Badly, is that a good way to say it?
Well, you present...
The baseball...
Oh, no, no, this isn't the dry high.
This is the dry high.
This is the dry... Yeah, but you presented this to, my understanding is Upper Gwinnett already, correct? Yes, they're well aware of what's going on. Did they tell you about any concerns regarding... No. Okay. So, I think it's on the... I know we're going through the permit process with Upper Gwinnett, too. And we know Len will be in discussions with them. I'll bring that up with them. All right. Make sure that whatever we do is...
Obviously, you're going to have power to it. You already have power there now, right?
Power. You have power there now, don't you? Oh, yeah. We'll be involved, too.
All right, let's...
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, let's start on this side. Anybody got any questions? Want to ask directly?
I don't have any questions, but I can say I served many a hot dog from that hot dog stand. I'm glad you're renovating it.
Well, next year, maybe you can serve some more.
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
All right, Johnny, you want to ask any questions?
Do you have any questions? Well, let Karen...
No, I don't think so.
Okay. If we approve this, how long... I'm assuming that this is, you're going to build this. This isn't like a modular or anything like that.
No, yes. It'll be...
You're going to build... When you get a final approval, when do you expect completion?
Before next season starts.
Okay. So, it won't be done at all this season, just when you go to the building?
Well, the season's basically over for the Little Lake fields. It'll be done around the middle, the end of June, and we probably won't even have the permits in place by that point, so...
Okay, I was just wondering the time aligned. I forgot to ask that before. Okay.
What is the cost of the project? With, we're estimated to be between $80,000 and $100,000.
Do you get grants?
No, we're going to do it all with private funding.
But I'm sure if people want to give toward it, they could.
Well, yeah, we have, we do have a large majority of the pieces in place, and some of the contractors have donated time and materials already.
Wow, that's great.
So, we're, we're well on our way here.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
We just have to get through these hurdles so we can break some ground.
Okay.
Mr. Kerr?
Do we get a percentage of the...
There we go.
I'll split my cut with you.
Well, you know, I think he's looking for a discount.
There's always all terms of revenue.
Hey, Kerr is looking for a discount from a hot dog or something. That's what he's looking for.
You guys will watch this game.
When you come over, we'll give you a deal on the hot dogs.
There you go. I told you, that's what it is.
$1.00 a hot dog.
I don't want that. I'm just going to have it.
He's just messing with you.
A little bit.
I can't see any reason why... I can't see any reason why we wouldn't do this. Does anybody see a reason?
I can, I just, well, I want to make a statement so they're quite aware of this. We have a 99-year lease with...
You are Brighton.
Right? 99 years, and then any improvements on the lot revert back to us because we take the property back. So, that's the reason why they're sending you to us to discuss this, because we own this place, and anything that gets put on it becomes us.
99 years? When does 99...
99 years. Well, it was only a couple of years ago when we signed the lease.
So, we got 96 more years.
Well, I just want to make sure everybody understands why they have to come and talk to us. Besides being a neighbor and those issues and our land, it reverts back to us at 99 years.
No, that's correct.
Aren't they trying to put a sign up, too?
My orientation...
What's that?
Aren't they trying to put a sign or scoreboard up?
They already have a scoreboard.
That's the, that's the other group.
Yeah, they, I mean, I just want to say, since I've been onboard, they've always been, they've always taken care of that facility and the grounds really nicely. I mean, is that right, John, Mr. Strobel? We'll attest to that.
Yeah, you can thank Dave for...
Thank you, Dave. Really, I just want to say that. Every time I've been there, I mean, my kids played ball, you know, travel team or whatever, and they played there. It was always a great facility, so I've got nothing but nice things to say about it.
Mr. Solomon, there is a scoreboard that the squires, football organization next door uses.
Did they, did they give you any other requirements? Like, I know I'm sure they gave you fire suppression and everything else, but...
Did the permits group?
Yeah, did they ask you for anything else?
They basically gave us some updates that we're making drawings, and we've been through the Board of Health, and because of our status as a youth organization and just seasonal, we're exempted from the Board of Health, so, which is a new role, by the way, and we were fortunate for that.
We were adding like grease trap and...
Right.
... it will be...
Is there sores up there now? Is, is there sewers up there now? Public sewers? That far up?
Yes, at one of the fields.
It's restrooms.
You're going to have to connect to that?
No.
Are they public?
No, what we're going to do for this, there is a, for the wastewater from the facility, we're going to have a gray water tank.
Okay. Added expense for you guys.
Can you put up some...
The work has already been done by Upper Gwinnett Utilities. This was planned, so it wasn't like...
Believe me, we've seen the drainage things.
Yeah, I'm going to repeat what George just said. So some of the work has been done by Upper Gwinnett, and they've been working with us all along on, and setting up so we can get to this point with the utilities and some of the pathways and some of the past projects. It's been part of a long-term plan.
When we first put this out, and Upper Gwinnett approached us, as part of this package was to do this for you guys, and it was already a nice relationship, anyway. We thought it was worthy of the consideration because of all the things we've done together, so I don't really see a problem with this. I don't hear anybody complaining. As long as you meet with the requirements for...
I had a question.
Go ahead, you want to ask something?
Yeah. Can you put up advertising on that?
We're debating that right now. That could be part of the fundraiser. It depends on how much we're actually going to need. One of the fundraising ideas is pavers, so that would be advertising, but it'll be subtle because they'll be in the ground, right? If we get a substantial donation, that might change things, and hopefully that could happen.
That's the alternative revenue chairman talking.
Do you have some... I'm willing to share revenue.
Can't help myself.
Thank you very much. At this point, I don't really see any problems about it. I would like to be kept informed each step, and then whatever your final approvals are, if you can make sure that Mr. Strobel gets copies of everything and any plans and designs. I would just prefer that you make sure this thing is completely safe for all visitors. I know that's already probably in your mind, anyway, but that one of the biggest concerns we've ever seen is making sure anything that gets done on our property or used by anybody around us, just make sure it meets all the requirements for fire, safety.
And again, you've got to get all approval by the town just regarding that, correct?
Okay. Thank you very much, guys.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good presentation.
All right, our second discussion tonight, our second topic or area, region, whatever you want to call it, committee, is going to be education, community, and policy. We have a revision for the Board Policy 5143, the School Nutrition Service, Family Fiscal Responsibility, and then we have the Board, I'm sorry, isn't that administrative regulation? Administrative Regulation 5143, which is the School Nutrition Service Implementation of the Family Fiscal Responsibility Act. So why don't we break up that discussion? You're going to handle that? Dr. Holman? Go ahead.
Sure. Absolutely. Thank you. When we discussed this proposed revision at ECP, the committee determined that we would bring this to work session, because there was some discussion about this when we implemented in August. If you recall, last year, the School Nutrition Service, Student Nutrition Services Department requested that we adopt this policy to address some issues we were having with non-payment of charges for school lunches. After having lived with it for a year and received feedback from parents, from staff, the Student Nutrition Services Office asked that we make some revisions. So I'm going to globally talk about some things, and then I'll get into summarizing what the specific revisions are, and then we'd be happy, I or Mr. Scrocky would be happy, happy to answer any questions that you have. One thing that we looked at was, because there was a lot of detail in the policy, we separated out the actual logistics of implementation into a regulation, and that's why you see so many strike-throughs in the policy, because we want to keep the policy more a general guideline as to what the Board's position is on this topic and put the specifics into the regulation. So things like, at what dollar amount do we call home, that sort of thing, which can be subject to change or in a regulation, rather than having to continually bring the policy back to the Board for revisions. When we implemented this, we did separate out and still have differences between high school, middle school, and elementary school in terms of what the charging policies are. The recommendation is to retain the current procedure where high school students are not allowed to charge lunches at all. Middle school students are allowed to charge one lunch, and the majority of the change is actually with elementary. Previously, students, after three charges at elementary, received a phone call home to notify the parents that the student had charged, there was a negative balance, and the expectation was that the parent would send the money in to cover the balance. The recommendation is to move that to 10 meals before that second phone call goes home. Part of the reason for that is, we are recommending that, as opposed to the original practice, which was to do a once-a-week notification of a negative balance, we are trying to be a little more proactive and moving to a once-a-week notification of a low balance, so that the notification goes home before the child charges the meal. The other thing that Pam looked at was making the dollar amount for that low-balance notification high enough that the student could still cover a week of lunches, so that if we're doing a once-a-week notification, you are notified, in effect, a week before the account would run out of money, so that you have an opportunity to get the money in the account before you would actually go into the negative. So we feel that that will help to address being more proactive about parents being notified of the low balance and having the ability to get the money into account before a charge occurs. After the 10th charge at the elementary level, what we are proposing to do is to go to a brown bag lunch for the child rather than the regular meal. So we would still be feeding the child, but providing an alternate lunch at that point until such time as the negative balance is cleared. Okay? That's the largest change to the procedures in terms of how many charges and what happens when you charge. As I said, we will do the low-balance notice after five days before the account would run out, and that amount will be determined by SNS every year based on the price of the lunch that year. We are also looking to add some language about charging for not just return checks, but also for insufficient funds in My Payments Plus, which is the software system we use where parents can deposit money in order to cover lunches for their children. So that language is, would be added to the policy, and that it would be automatically deducted from the student's account in My Payments Plus. So we've also had some feedback in terms of potentially adding a statement to the regulation about writing off bad debt. Current practice is that we hold that debt for a year, and after one calendar year, if that debt is not resolved, then that, in effect, is a write-off of bad debt. If it's the will of the Board, we can certainly develop some language to that effect and include that in the policy or the regulation. So I've...
What's My Payments Plus?
That's the electronic payment system.
Yeah, it's an electronic payment software system, so parents can use, I believe it's a credit card, correct, Steve? Or they can bring in money and hand it to the cashier, and it can be deposited to the student's account. So for instance, I could send in or charge on my card $50, and then the lunches every day for my child would be deducted from that $50. The way we had originally implemented this, the parent did not receive a notification from us that the account was getting low. They received notification when the account went into the negative. So what we're looking to say is, you know, just for our, just for the sake of the discussion, at something like $15 left, you would receive a notification that the balance is getting low, so that you can deposit the money before the account actually runs into the negative.
So it's not the parent...
Can you set it up so they just, you can just take money out? I mean, can't parents just say, you know, $25 a pop, take it out on a...
I believe with the credit card option, you can do that, correct?
You can do payment option.
You can do that?
Auto replenish.
You can do that, auto replenish on the website.
Yes.
Have you not seen Easy Pass? They whack it for 70 bucks when I run it up.
So is that notifications?
So, so just, so that can be done through My Payments Plus. Use of My Payments Plus is voluntary for the parent, but they can set it up so that there's an auto replenishment if they do that.
How do you hit them up for the $25 on My Payments Plus? When does that come into play? Do they go negative?
If they go negative, if we, if we go negative, in effect, what would happen is we would add a charge just like we would for a check with insufficient funds, so they would have to cover the negative balance plus the charge for going into the negative.
I thought that was for return checks only, though.
Yeah, it was. The proposal is to also give the charge for insufficient funds in My Payments Plus.
So they go a dollar negative, we're going to charge $25?
You mean auto, you mean... No, 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 wait a minute. Are we talking about, are we talking about a $25 insufficient charge? Are we talking about an automated, we charge you $25 to your credit card, now you're not in trouble anymore?
No, no, no. Listen, say it again. It's a $25 insufficient charge.
Yeah, how does that work? If I'm able to charge them $25 for insufficient funds, can I charge them for 50 bucks and put in money in their account?
My Payments Plus, you can actually pay with a credit card or a check payment. So if you indicate you're paying with a check and you don't have sufficient funds in your account, you'll be charged a fee at that point.
That's a bad check.
I'm thinking you can slip the $25 in, and you go negative. What happens with My Payments Plus?
In My Payments Plus, well, you run, you run out of money at that point in time. Would be no different, whatever balance is in the student's account, if the student paid by cash or a check.
Is there a negative, $25 charge? Is there an additional charge for them to go into the negative on My Payments Plus?
You can in My Payments Plus. You can't, you can't go negative in My Payments Plus.
So how do you track it when they get to 10 free lunches?
There's something set up in the system that tracks...
I understand.
Tracks the number of meals that they're charged.
We're going to have to research that, Tim.
They aren't. At Alabama, it says...
Tim, I understand.
The brown bag...
I understand your question, too.
I can see if a check is returned, but this has, and for insufficient funds, for My Payments Plus. What's that mean?
I thought that was just for checks.
If you have nothing in there, that means you're going to pay, in order to start back up again, you got to pay $25, you know?
No. Well, we can take it, we can take a look at that language, Mr. Kerr, and revise that before it comes to the Board for the first reading.
So that notification, is that coming from the school district, or is that, you have to sign up for that in My Payments Plus?
There's both, actually.
There's actually two notifications. If parents are electing to pay via My Payments Plus, they can set up parameters that notifies them via email. Those parameters can be at $25, $50, you basically name the amount. There's a second series of notifications that will come via School Messenger. And that's where, if a student has a low balance of about $15, that's when the notifications will go out, or when the student starts charging the meals.
Right. So in effect, what Student Nutrition Services will do every week is pull a list of all students whose account balance is below the cut point, and then generate a School Messenger message to those families, so that if they're, so that if they have not set up My Payments Plus for a low-balance notification, we are also doing a low-balance notification, make sure that we catch anybody who is at that point.
Is there going to be some kind of check, like after a one-year period, to see, is this working?
Yeah, absolutely. Are we doing that?
End of evaluation?
Yeah, exactly. Maybe, come back, and if the policy needs to be changed. Sure.
I'm not a big fan of the brown bag.
Well, the brown bag's a federal program, right?
Yeah, right. I just want to make sure that, you know, no one's denying or embarrassed. I guess it turns to two things.
Yes.
Two things I concern to be the most. I don't want that to happen.
Well, I think the brown bag has potential to embarrass someone.
That's a 10...
That's a 10-not-paid days.
Right.
Lunches.
Right.
That doesn't mean it's going to be any less embarrassing. That might make it more embarrassing that they've been...
Look at the evolution, though, of this problem. Before, when you were on free and reduced lunch for your family, you had a special code, and you had to say it out loud, so everybody knew what you were and who you were. And now we've gone to a payment system where they just give their student ID number or ID number, and then they get paid. The issue is, we're carrying $5,000, $6,000 a year in bad debt from people not paying us, and the real question becomes, is this going to improve that situation? The second thing is, I mean, and I hate to bring up that Easy Pass thing, but I mean, it's real. I mean, I don't get a choice. They reset me back to the 75 or 70 bucks, and I pay, and don't get me wrong, I use it up, it takes time, but I mean, we ain't going to end up going there at some point.
Right.
I think another advantage, and I understand, I think I understand Mr. Sullivan...
You can't force them to do it.
No, I know on Easy Pass.
No, I would...
I would do it as a public system.
Well, the question, the question becomes, I mean, you don't want to deny kids lunch, that's not the issue, so we're handling that. We're handling the idea that there's no embarrassment, the jove factor that is concerned about. Now this becomes a question, is if a parent's going to sign up and set the parameters right, they're never going to have to worry about this, because the auto replenishment may give them the answer.
Is there auto replenishment?
Yeah.
If you set it up to do that, yes.
I'm talking about the person who didn't do it, let it go, hasn't paid. Now the question becomes, what do you do?
I know, but that person, they didn't set up the system that way, you'll never be able to replenish from that person.
Correct. We can't mandate that they set up the system that way.
I'm sure of them calling in or coming in online and doing their own thing and charging it, yeah.
Right. But it doesn't solve the problem.
But let's say... I'm confused now. You said there is auto replenishment built into it.
My Payments Plus is a third-party software. The person, I believe, if I understand correctly, has the choice whether to set it up to auto replenish, correct?
Absolutely.
Yeah, we can't force them to auto replenish.
If they, if they don't do it...
They can opt out of auto replenish.
Well, they can, well, then they do it at their peril.
Correct.
Well, I think they have to opt into it. I think they have to opt into auto replenishment and not opt out, which I would think...
You would want to force them to opt out of it, not opt in, so you get more people to passively opt in.
And we can, we can check into that, Mr. Sullivan. I don't know that we have control over that because it's a third-party vendor.
And I appreciate the comments made. I also believe that another advantage of going to 10 is that one of the things that the School Nutrition Services Department will do is to gently encourage parents to consider the free and reduced lunch program.
Correct.
So if they are having difficulty, sometimes things happen suddenly, somebody loses a job, and it doesn't get replenished, and, you know, now they're starting to have charges. It gives them 10 days there to be able to get all that paperwork filed and get approved and get on the free and reduced lunch.